We'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, April the 22nd, 2025, and welcome everyone here to our work session. We have a few of our patrons here with us and the majority of our staff, and we have all of our council members but one that will be coming here shortly. So we'll now move to our first item, our Police Department Employee Presentation.
Yeah, Mayor, I forgot to mention that we're gonna probably push that back to the end of the work session.
Oh, okay.
The officer that is being awarded is doing graveyards, and so he's gonna come in at the end part of our work session.
So do we want to move to your cemetery discussion?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, we'll turn time over for Item B, regarding a new memorial at the city cemetery.
All right, a couple of months ago, Deion and I were, we had a citizen. I don't know, they might have copied one or two of you on an email to us regarding a memorial for children, babies that were, had passed away via miscarriage in maybe the second or third trimester. So this is a little bit of a unique thing. There are cemeteries that have what's called angel gardens where they, for babies that have only been, you know, alive for a few minutes, maybe a few days, that if they pass away, there's a special place where they can be buried. Well, this is a little different as we're dealing with miscarriage. The family that we had talked to had said, you know, there's not a place for us to mourn this type of thing, and they had had a couple instances in their life where it was kind of a late-term miscarriage. And so they had asked if this is something that we would consider as a city. So Deion and I have been working on it. We have a, I mean, initially, the idea was to maybe create a memorial where they could put names up and things like that, and I think we've backtracked from that, and we, our preference is, is we just create a memorial, a monument, and a place for somebody to sit and to just have a place of recognition for those that are in that situation. They can have a place where they can come and either mourn or just reflect on what's happened in their lives. And so this is something new, I think something fairly unique. We would like to make this as part of our new cemetery as we are continuing doing those things. Deion has looked at monuments. We're probably in the neighborhood of $5,000 to $10,000 to do this. I mean, this would include a bench or two. It would, there would be a little bit of property that we would set aside on this new cemetery. So we are part of the way down the road, but I wanted to get feedback from City Council if this is something you're supportive of. Budget-wise, within our cemetery budget, we do have a fund balance there. We can cover the cost. Either that or it could be made part of the budget. We might have a little bit of money left over from the bond in regards to Cook Family Park and the infrastructure that we're putting on out there. So are there any concerns or questions regarding what we're trying to do?
I would just have a question. How much, how much land are you thinking? And how many, how many plots ultimately are we replacing with this memorial?
Okay, so let me back on that too.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I know we have unused, on the newer part of the cemetery, on the east side, there's part that we can't really use. When you're driving on First West, could it be used there? Because I don't think any plots can actually go on that east side of that part.
Come up, Deion.
That's great, that's a great.
And maybe that will.
Yeah, that's a great.
No, that's a good question. I don't know exactly how many plots this would replace, but if there's a spot that we can't put cemetery.
Is unplottable.
Yeah, then that might be a good spot to do that. Go ahead.
So our thought was, as we met with the family on site and looked at the different options, 100 East was one. It's very noisy with the height, with the.
No, not, sorry, 100 West. You know, as you go down First West.
Yes, we looked at that too, just between the road and 100 West. We did look at the new section where we have the pavilion for families to hold their, those service for the cremation niches. There's a little half-round type area planter. This would not take up any lots. So it would just be placed in the new, it would be west of the pavilion in one of the landscaped areas. So it'd be just a monument-type thing that would be placed there.
That was already planned to be landscaping in the first place.
Correct. Yeah, so, yeah, that's, that's where we, the family liked the idea, and we liked the idea because it didn't involve sidewalks and building a bunch of stuff and more landscape and that type of thing. So it kind of fit in with what they were thinking.
I guess it puts it close to the pavilion for him to sit.
Yeah, so we have benches. We haven't placed those benches. We have two benches out there for that area, and we haven't placed those, but we could place them near that monument. That was kind of our thought, and then maybe Scott's gonna get into some other things, but maybe we had a.
A bronze or something.
A bronze or something with an angel or something.
Is this purely for, you know, unborn, unborn miscarriages?
Correct. Well, generally, that, they, if it's a one- or two-day-old, they'll generally do a complete burial.
A stillborn type.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you guys know, but my first child died during delivery, 40 weeks pregnant. And I have a couple of comments about this. There was, there was, of course, nowhere for us to feel at that point. Have we ever considered being able to buy? So we buried her on a family site up in Ogden, but it was very expensive. And I was just wondering if we've ever considered doing half or quarter plots for situations like that?
Yeah, so currently.
It's not a full casket, it's just a.
Yeah, it's a small casket. An infant is definitely a small casket. Generally, the families will place those underneath the headstone in lots that they own. The parents will buy two lots. They'll place the infant underneath the headstone.
But it's still, they still have to buy a full plot?
They do, and that's something we're looking at doing in the neck, in the new section right in this area, is a baby land and dedicating maybe 20 lots. And they're small, right? They're, we could fit 20 lots in probably, I haven't done the figures, but probably about eight or 10 regular, normal lots. And so we would set up, that's one thing we're thinking about doing right in this area.
So this is.
Let's do it together? Let's put them in one type area? Is that what you're thinking, Diana? I think that's.
It would be not, well, there were, just were no options for.
Yeah, I mean, I love the, I love the, the, I guess, pre-birth and even post-birth.
Small casket.
Small casket-type remembrances or memorials.
There are a lot of cemeteries that have, they consider them baby lands.
Okay.
Lehigh has a brand-new one that they just built. It's been there about a year, and it's already filling up. It's surprising, but we just have not had that option the way we were set up. And so going to this new section, right, that first section of the newest section, that was our idea to put in some baby, a baby land in that area. So it would be in the vicinity of this memorial, so.
I love the idea of an angel memorial statue. That's wonderful.
I agree.
So, I mean, we're gonna proceed. We're already part of the way down that road, but before we got too much further, we wanted to circle back with you, but.
Have you, because I would be in favor, I think we're all in favor of a bronze, maybe a local artist doing a statue or something like that. How, have you guys looked at pricing for?
Well, so that's gonna segue into probably the next segment. As we've been approached by Greg Cook, he's been working with some art people that do bronzes to potentially do something for the cemetery and the park. And so that, we need to, I mean, we've had high-level discussions with them, but they have sounded like they want to do something for the, for the cemetery and then also some, something for the park. But I don't know if that's two bronzes, or four, or six. These things are pretty expensive, the bronzes are. And so we'll, we'll continue our discussion with the Cook family on that, and if that's something that they're, you know, planning on doing, willing to do. Of course, they need our permission. It's our property as a city for them to do that. But once we get that ready for presentation, we'll bring them in here and have them show you what their ideas are in regards to that. So I just want to let you know that's, that's early stages, but I'm hoping we have something sooner rather than later in front of you. Because obviously, we're, I mean, we're opening the park on June 7th officially. They're starting landscaping now, so there's gonna be grass going down on the cemetery part first. Is that right, Neil? Cemetery park, I mean, we're gonna start seeing grass going down. And so that's gonna change a little bit of the dynamic of all the things around that park. So the, if we're gonna do some sort of art or bronze or something in conjunction with the Cook family, that is something that can, that can happen as it goes. That doesn't necessarily have to be all installed by June 7th or whatever.
I would love to be a part of this conversation, but there, there is a local artist. Her name is Jeannette Page. She was also a ninja warrior.
Yeah.
She's kind of famous.
Yeah, I know they've already engaged with somebody specifically, but if we want to do our own as a city?
Well, I think, my feeling is we oughta, we oughta proceed with our own thoughts and ideas and strategies, and if that aligns with a, with a major donor, great.
Jeannette's has lost a child, so she's, that is her focus.
Yeah. Yeah, for us to pursue this, this is why I kind of want to see where the Cooks were gonna come out, because like I said, there's a price tag on that. And if that's something we want to do, we do have care money. That is something we can do. I don't think that's gonna be a problem. If we can get something figured out that both the city and the Cooks agree with, that might be ideal. If not, then, and we want to do our own thing, then we'll put something together and bring it back to you to take a look at that. So that's cemetery.
Okay.
That's item number two.
Move on to C and go right into the budget discussion?
Yeah, so we have budget packets that Denise is gonna hand out. We're gonna start with Megan. Megan wasn't here four weeks ago when we started working through the capital, and I know that there was questions on some of that. Two weeks ago, it just got laid in the meeting by the time we got to that portion of our program. So we are going to have her start. After she's done, then we'll, we'll kick it back to me. We'll go over our one-pager and some of the information the City Council has requested from a couple of weeks ago. The page we're gonna, that Megan is gonna be operating off of is this spreadsheet here on top. It says capital supplement, supplemental summary. So that will be your reference guide on the projects that she's gonna talk about and the costs. And so once she's done, then we'll kick it back to me, and we'll continue Phase Two of the budget discussion. So Megan?
All right. I don't know, I'll probably open it up for questions here in just a minute, because probably you guys have more questions than I really have to present. So I'll present more on what you guys have questions about. But just some, just kind of some overview of what some of these capital projects are and what we've requested. Couple of them are specific to, I mean, when I walked into the rec center for my very first time when I got the job and moved down here, I felt like it was a little dark and dreary. And, and we get comments often that people think the building's like 30 years old, and it's not. It's only like 16 years old. So we're trying to find some different avenues to brighten up the space. I mean, you walk into Clyde Rec Center, you walk into some of these newer spaces, and they've got color and light. And we're, we're not asking to rebuild the whole building or go crazy on anything as far as, you know, that kind of thing. But we've got, we've come up with some ideas. I am pivoting off of the paint on the walls. We're in the middle of a process right now. I don't have numbers right this second. We're working on that quote. But it's a company called Felt Right, which is actually local. It's kind of a soundproof-type material, but it also comes in various colors, various sizes, designs. We could put mountains with a little G on it, so we could get really creative. It doesn't, you can get as creative as covering every single inch of the wall, or you can just have a design that goes down the hallway. So it provides some color and some vibrance to the space, but not necessarily painting it and having the maintenance that goes with that.
I've seen it before somewhere. It looks pretty awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I know there's, like, Draper Rec Center actually has some of this stuff. So again, we're working on the quotes to figure out what that pricing looks like. But I think it actually will be better than the paint concept. It'll provide some color and some design, which I think would be really, really fun to spice up the space.
What was the name of that company?
FeltRight.com, well, Felt Right, and then, yeah. So you can go take a look at it. It's got some really cool, and we could be as creative as we want to or as simple as we want to. But I think it will really warm up the space, provide some color. It even is soundproofing, so it brings down the echoing that happens in the building. So I think there's kind of some positive to that, that I think will be better than the paint concept. So, so we're looking at that, but the same, as far as right now, the same pricing request. We're gonna request the same, I mean, we could probably spend millions of dollars on it, but we'll take what we can out of the $40,000 that we're requesting.
So is it like a, like a permanent felt, or could someone like peel it off with their hands?
You, you can't, it's industrial.
Oh, okay.
You can't peel it off with your hands.
Oh, I see.
But it's pretty cool, because I've seen other places have done it, and they, like, so they put their logo or pictures on there.
Yeah.
And they just, it just goes on directly over the brick?
Yeah, yeah, we, they just put it on, on the brick. They told us we wouldn't have any issues with it necessarily. Peeling off easily. It's, it's industrial, it's not residential, so it's, I, I don't know the longevity yet. I emailed them to find out what the longevity is, and I don't have that answer quite yet, but.
So probably four-by-eight panels, and they're just gluing them in.
But you could, you could do, I mean, if you look at pictures of it, it's not even, you could do panels, but we could do hexagons, we could do triangles. We could, you, literally, it's as creative as you want it to be. So that, so that's the interior painting. On the flooring, I know on the flooring, the original description we had, we said it was tile. That was not what we, we originally talked tile, and I think I copied and pasted the wrong information into that, that request. So we're just looking at rebuffing, bringing it back down to its concrete, restaining it, and then repolishing it. So, and probably a brighter color. We won't go dark brown. We'll probably go a lighter color, which I think if we go lighter color on the floor and then if we offset it with some of this, these felt colors, I think that will really brighten up the space. And we don't necessarily have to do paint, so we can kind of offset it with those two things.
But Megan, what the request is, is to do that in two phases?
Correct. Although, we got information today that it's gonna be cheaper to go than what we had originally, because we originally talked epoxy as well, and so that was our original quote. We can probably do both the upstairs and the downstairs for a little bit less than the $90,000. So it would actually be one phase now. So, so that's cheaper than going the original route that we were talking about.
Can I ask a question on that? So does that, is that like a maintenance thing that we've identified has to be done because it's failing right now, or is that an aesthetic thing?
It definitely, if you walk in, you can see that it's, like, there's gray areas, so it's no longer brown. And, and I think the finish has completely come off of it. So like, you can't even put duct tape on it or something like that, and it will pull up the finish. So I, I don't, I think it's past just repolishing it. I think in order to, you know, because it's down to the concrete on some of the spaces where it's gray instead of the brown color, it's gonna have to be restained and then repolished on top of that. Now, I do think we probably, we need to look at long-term of how often it should be come in and repolished, because I don't know if that's been happening as often as it should be, because getting down to the concrete probably shouldn't necessarily happen, right? You should be able to go in and repolish it every so often, so that it keeps that stain. So, yeah. I, I think it's more of, it's, it is worn down on some of the areas. Like, if you, in the main lobby area, you can see that. And like I said, for some reason, if we put any kind of tape on it, it pulls up the whole finish, so, and that leaves, leaves behind the, the finish is gone.
Yeah, and I, so that was another question is, is this like on a maintenance schedule where we've been polishing it every so often to maintain what we had there? Or do we, I know you haven't been around for.
Yeah.
A ton of time. I'm just wondering if it's on the.
Do you know, Deion, do you know the answer to that?
Roll the deck.
It is refinished or, or repolished?
Thanks, Deion.
Yeah. So then, a couple other just things, front desk remodel. I know we've talked about that in previous years. What we're just talking about with this phase is redoing the cupboards and the, or the top?
Counter top.
Thank you, countertop. And just reworking that. We've got it kind of peeling off right now, and it could be a more functional space than what it is right now. So we just, that's what we're looking at, is just redoing that only, not necessarily moving it or anything like that. We're just redoing the cupboard space and the countertop. Mezzanine-level lockers, we've actually, we just, we've had quite a few people, surprisingly enough, say they go up and walk, and they have nowhere to put their phone or their key, so we're just talking smaller lockers. That's, and it's just, you know, a couple, couple of them. I mean, you know, it depends on what size we do, but then, you know, the seniors that are up walking or whoever, they can throw their keys in there, their phone in there, or their coat or whatever. And so it's accessible right there at the top level as opposed to the downstairs level, so.
And is that a free thing? I mean, is.
Yeah, it, the, the system that we've looked at is self-locking, meaning that you actually can come in, put in your own code, and then when you leave, it zeros it out. It's a whole cool system that, so there's not separate locks that we're checking in and checking out. We're not, you're not checking it out for, that's your locker. It's just the timeframe that you're there, you choose your own code. You use, use this space when you're there. So it's a self-locking system, which is, it's actually kind of a cool system. You don't pay. It's just like, it's a, it's a, there's a couple different kinds, but it's just, there's a code system on it, and you just press a certain sequence to, hey, this is my code 000, and then you come back and, and there's a way for us to access it. So if you forget your code, then we can, we can access it if we need to for them, and, and, yeah, get into it.
Is that really your code?
Yes, it sure is.
Can we, can we go back to the 55 grand? I think that was on the front desk remodel. You said just some new cabinets. I guess I didn't fully capture the, the vision of what the 55,000 is for.
Yeah, so it, it's just reworking that entire front desk, the, the whole cabin, cabinetry, the countertop, and, and reworking that whole area. Some, a little bit of some electricity, where I feel like we're pulling electricity from about two, two plugins for all the things that are at the front desk. So it's just sprucing it up, making it more functional for the front desk on there. And we did talk about potentially doing kind of a half-wall that goes right behind the front desk, so it kind of covers up the hallway and the storage, and then having a logo that goes on that, so it just makes it a nice, good look. That won't cost very much actually to do that, but, but yeah, that's, that's, that's all that that entails. I know in the past, we've talked about moving the front desk, maybe to the, to the middle of the lobby and that sort of thing. At this point, we're just talking about redoing the front desk and as, as where it's at.
And so what would that be replaced with, like, as far as the countertops that are there? And I know it's laminate, so what would we replace it with and that base on the bottom?
Have you seen what's at the pool, that, since they've redone what's at the pool?
Oh, not since.
It's a really nice, it's actually, I think it's, it might be, it might be granite, actually. I can't remember, but we would use the same company, and it just looks real clean and crisp. It's much more durable, and it's gonna last a lot longer than like laminate would. So, yeah.
It would be a chance to maybe choose a little lighter color, lighten it up like you want to do.
Yeah, yep, yep, looking at colors for that.
So again, just with the current condition of the desk, I, I don't sit there, so I don't know what it looks like.
Sure.
Is it failing right now, or is it, what's going on with it right now?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the laminate is definitely peeling. So if you look at the countertop itself, just that in its portion, it's peeling off and on the edges, and it's been, you know, coming, coming off on, on the countertop. But then if you're sitting on the opposite side, I think there's some opportunity for us to actually change the level of where our staff are sitting. They, when you walk in, I feel like they feel low, so we want them to be a little bit higher so then they can see people a little better, catch eye contact a little bit better. And then we're also reworking the cabinets. We have, right now, we have the money, cash register is up on top, and then the computer, and then a printer. And so I think we really can rework the cabinetry down below so that we really use space more efficiently. And then we also provide some more storage space up at the front desk, so it's not sitting on the ground. It feels like we always have things that are supposed to be picked up, and, you know, coaches picking up equipment or whatever, and I think we can rework that space so that it just cleans it up and looks a little bit more professional when people come in, so.
So have you had a rough design that you're kind of playing with right now, or?
Not yet.
How did we get to the 55,000 number?
We, we used it based off of what we had previously requested last year, because last year, we talked about, I think it was more like a, I can't remember, $180,000 request, but we were moving the desk, right? And so we, we just kind of took a ballpark number from that request, where we're not moving it, and we're just leaving where it's at. So there might be a little bit of adjustment on what that looks like as far as pricing goes, but we have not done an official design and quote on that yet.
Will we be able to get those numbers before the budget in June?
We could, yeah. I mean, if that's, if we want to move forward in that direction, and you want me to get like an actual design and get a quote idea, I can definitely work on that and make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just interested if we're gonna allocate 55 grand. I just want to know.
Exactly what.
What's gonna actually, like, moving from laminate to granite, that's great.
Sure.
I've done that in my kitchen. It's nice. I paid a lot of money to do that, right?
Right.
But, but is it a want, is it a need? That's what I'm trying to judge right now.
Sure, yeah, okay. Well, if it's, if that works for you, I'll get some more details on what that looks like, and we can come back to that and just have a little bit more specific conversation on, on that front desk portion. So, yeah. And then the last one on there, I think, oh, well, then, the HVAC units, we've been setting aside money for that every year, a couple of years now, right, Denise? I think, and so the idea is they're just setting money aside every year for that as our HVAC units go out. We just have money set aside and ready to replace those. We actually, I think we used it last year. Yeah, so, so that's just kind of an ongoing thing. The audio improvements, so there's a lot of, this, we have a very specific quote on. There's a lot of fluidity on this 290,000. It came back, I think, even higher than that, but we've backed off on what the request was. But essentially, what we're looking at is a whole PA system to the whole rec center, so that no matter what room you're in, we can page people. It's also fixing our fitness, group fitness space. They're struggling with the audio there. There's issues with the speakers and the headset and connecting. It just needs to be updated there. Also, in our multipurpose room for the, for the fitness classes there. We did pull out of the quote, we got, we had quotes on like a really big, huge, nice sound system in each of the gyms, so that as we did special events, the gyms kind of had that. We felt like maybe that was a little bit more than what we needed and maybe not super cost-effective, so we pulled that out. So this is just in, in giving us better connection with the PA system, making sure we can, you know, talk to anybody in the building at any time. There's emergency, whatever it may be, we can page different areas, and then fixing our fitness space and improving their audio there. So what questions do you guys have for me?
I think, Megan, you were gone when we talked about this, but did we find out about the insurance on the roof, if it's gonna cover the wind damage?
We've been on the side with the insurance company, but they have not come back to.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I, and I actually didn't speak to that one. And to, to clarify, I didn't, that's been requested through parks and the facilities.
Okay.
But yes, that is part of rec center capital improvement, but I didn't speak to that.
Well, I mean, 290K for audio. That's a tough sell to, to me, but I know it's even gonna be a tougher sell to residents that come and talk to me.
Sure.
So tell me about what, what kind of benefit? I know I heard that you're kind of gonna be able to page. Are there specific things that have happened where you're like, man, we, we really need a $300,000 audio system because we're so far behind, or?
Yeah, so I think a couple of things. One, definitely emergencies, or anytime that, you know, somebody's car horn is going off or whatever, right? It's, it's really hard to find somebody to be like, a lost child, right? Like, we had a situation last year where, you know, we, there's a lost child. You know, how do we start connecting really quickly with everybody in the building? Obviously, those are not often, right? But in any kind of emergency situation, or anytime we want to just touch base with everybody that's in the building or try to find somebody, that's super helpful.
Is there not that right now?
No.
Oh, there's no PA system right now?
No. There was one, but it is not working, so it's not a working system.
Is there a way to get that one fixed instead of installing a new one?
Uh, we could check into that. We did not, I mean, we just had an audio company come in and do a bid for us on what that would look like to, you know.
So we don't know why the current one isn't working though? But there's, so there's one installed that's just not working?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, and it's not, uh, it's not to every room. It's only in parts of the space. It's not to the entire rec center. This new one would be, every single space has connection to that. In addition to that, as we, I think the other advantage that we feel like it would be really helpful for as we're pro- providing more events for the community and we're putting on more special events and things like that, this really ups the quality of what we can provide as far as, you know, I mean, it would be helpful at the employee party the, the other day, right? We can use that sound system to, to, um, put on these special events and use for that sort of thing.
Is it an external system, internal system? My, uh, speaker system?
Uh, little bit of both, cause it's PA, so it's in that like actual ceiling, right? So PA system, but there are some external speakers that come with part of it as well so that we can use it for special events.
Did we get other bids on that or was that just?
No, not yet. And I mean, we would, right? We would go through an RFP process if this were to move forward. We just got an initial bid just to find out what, what the pricing looked like.
Is the majority of the two-ninety coming from rewiring the multipurpose and fitness room or the PA system? Like where's the majority of that breakdown coming?
Um, let me find out. I think it's mostly the PA system. Let me take a look here. Um.
While you're looking at that, my, my comment is just, you know, I've been in a lot of gyms. I've been in a lot of event spaces that are, you know, professional.
Right.
And their PAs all suck. So I, so I'm not convinced that.
That's rough.
We're gonna get a better PA that's gonna be understandable in those huge gyms that have, you know, the fabric kind of divider and you're gonna get all this echo still. I just, I'm a little worried the two-ninety is not gonna provide the benefit we think it is.
Well, so we, so to clarify, most of what this is doing is more in upstairs hallways, cardio, weight and rooms downstairs. We pulled out of the gym. Uh, there'll be some in the gym, but not near to the capacity that they said that we should have if it were to be able to hear with all the echoing and essentially your two floors, right? Cause it goes all the way through.
I mean, I, I'd like to see a, if we can, I do agree with a better sound system in the aerobics or fitness room and the multipurpose. So if I could see like a separate bid for that.
Okay.
Um, because I do think the amount of classes and the people in there, you know, I was in there, it was, this was years ago. It, it could definitely be a better system. I think that makes the quality of the classes that we can provide.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't know about the PA system. So that's why I'd like to see a breakdown of what those, rewiring those two rooms would be to provide a better quality sound system for those rooms. Cause I think there's a lot of participants coming in and out of those rooms.
Sure.
Throughout the day.
Yeah.
Like every single day that would be affected by the quality of sound there.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I, yeah, I, that seems like a lot of money for, I mean, I would expect it to be muffled like you hear at Walmart.
Right.
Charlie Brown?
Yeah, no one can hear anything.
That's how we're gonna start our, that's how we're starting our.
That's just part of the experience is that you, you know.
Yeah.
The PA system goes and we're all trying to figure out what's being said, but.
Right.
Um, yeah, I don't know. I, I, so I'd like to see a breakout of those.
Okay. Uh, I, I do have a breakdown, so, um, should I just email that out? Is that the best way to email a breakdown?
Yeah. Well, so, I mean, just for the purposes of today, Megan's presenting. We'll give you a couple of weeks to internalize and ask, and you can email her questions. We'll bring this back on May sixth and have the second round of discussion on what you're okay with or what you'd want to do differently, so.
Do you have, does it show?
Sorry, just to break down the cost of the audio, she can email that to you so you can see all that.
I'm just curious, and maybe it'll be in the thing you emails, directional sound domes, right? That, that's a little more focused.
Yeah.
Like a lot of your libraries and different places have those.
Yep.
They're more directional.
Mm-hmm.
And then people can actually understand.
Yeah, I mean, and we talked about that, so I, they, they talked through all the, you know, scientific explanation of sound and what would make sense in all the spaces. I, you know, I, I don't, I can't speak to that necessarily, but, but yeah.
I, I was impressed with, with directional sound domes.
Oh, thank you.
So, good, good work.
Sounded like you knew what he was talking about.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and I think, um, that also being said, and so I'll send this to you, but the, the two-ninety I think is actually on the high end because it doesn't, the way it breaks down, it breaks it down by each component, but then the, the labor and the, like the equipment and mechanicals all grouped in one, and that's a high price. And I think that's gonna be lower the less of these components we do, so. So I can kind of, uh, well, I'll, I'll break it down in the email for you to tell you kind of what fitness is or what PA system looks like, uh, you know, labor and design and, and then. But I think truly what we're looking at is, this is probably a higher number than what we'll actually end up really needing. They just didn't break it down in the quote as far as each project and what equipment would be required for that, if that makes any sense. I'll send that to you and you can take a look at that and if you have questions, just let me know, but.
Yeah, I think just another main thing is, and I, I know it'd be kind of maybe hard to get somebody in there in the next two weeks, but thinking about the current PA system and if it's salvageable.
Sure.
Well, I think that was installed when the building was.
Yeah.
I think it's out of date.
Yeah, and maybe it's an update to the system as opposed to a whole new system.
Probably speak to that. I mean, wasn't it the original PA system we put in there?
Yeah, it was. It had a microphone and it had four, the old-fashioned like bullhorn speakers, one in each corner.
But if it's already in place, maybe there's something they can do to rewire that would save some money or something.
Sure, yeah.
Yes.
And we can check on that.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm hearing what Eric said and I think I'm agreeing with you. They, we, we obviously went just cheap.
Sure.
You know, to get the building up and functional.
Yeah, yeah.
But as, as, at a certain point for twenty years, it's just the equipment is not gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
Changes. Yeah, and I, and I, and I hear you on, you know, want versus need. Um, I'm, I'm, my, my philosophy as a director over the recreation department, I'm always gonna push for the best that we can, right? Like, I mean, I'd love to say that, you know, start to be a standout PG rec center is, is standout for the special events that they can put on because we have some of these things or, you know, we're not gonna go rebuild our building anytime soon. So we're not gonna look like Clyde Rec Center, like we, we love what Clyde looks like, but I think we can do some of these other things that are, there are more expensive options, but I'd like to look at some of these other, maybe, maybe there are really cheaper options and we can obviously consider those. Um, but, you know, I, I wanna, I want us, make us look good and make sure we're serving our community and, and try to do the best that we can with what we got, so. Any questions?
Anything else counsel for me? Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want, I want that in my office.
Okay, let's get back to, uh, some of the other budgeting items we've been discussing over the past couple of months. Uh, we'll refer back to our one-pager, which is this page, Pleasant Grove City Revenue Uses 2026. Uh, there is really nothing that has changed on this with the exception of what we want to do with the, the PR, uh, discussion that we have been having. So the, let me start with the, uh, 401K match. Uh, one of the things requested from the city council is that we had, we would have a criteria as far as this is concerned. So Denise has written this up, uh, borrowing, uh, from Provo and, and kind of what they do. We, we put our own little stamp and things that we would want to do with this, but there's a, just a couple of things for you to be aware of as far as this is concerned. So when somebody starts employment with this, they're on probation. Six months if you are, um, just a, a general employee, a, a year if you're public safety. So while an employee's on probation, they're not gonna be eligible for the 401K match because if for some reason they have to be let go in that time, it just becomes a big pain to kind of have to deal with. So, so, uh, people starting, uh, brand new in our city would not be eligible, at least for six months up to a year. We do have, and this is only a handful of people, um, that are already collecting a pension through the Utah retirement system. So we call it, uh, I don't know, for lack of a better term, we call it double dipping. So they're, they're collecting their pension, but they're also employed with the city, which is legal and it's allowed. Um, but those individuals, because they are already being paid a pension and we are, we as a city still pay into the Utah retirement system for them, um, we, they would not be eligible for the 401K match. And I think that's probably three employees in our city. Um, and then the other thing is we'd have a two-year vesting period. So, um, once you start contributing, um, two years, you need to contribute for two years. If you leave employment, uh, before two years, we would, um, uh, refund, uh, well, I don't know if we'd refund. We just leave your portion in there that you've put in, your part of the match, the city's portion, then we would pull out. And so that, that would be, just be a vesting system to encourage people that if they're gonna come and participate, that they're gonna, uh, at least work for us for two years. So, uh, if you, if you add it up, if somebody starts fresh, um, six months probation before they can contribute, then a two-year vest would be two and a half years that they'd be at the city before they're vested. Um, we do have, I mean, a hundred and some employees right now that if we implemented this, they would already be vested or, um, they would already be eligible since they're already employed here and have been employed longer than six months. Once they started contributing, then we'd have the two-year vesting, even though they may have been here for fifteen years or whatever. So any questions on 401K match?
Nope, sounds good.
Okay. Um, the second one I want to talk about is, uh, the PR. Okay, I've thought a lot about this and I'm trying to figure out a different way to, uh, to skin the cat here, so. Um, what we've done is the proposal now is to scale back and to eliminate this full-time position. So, um, there was a particular employee in mind. They will still be employed here. They'll still be a part-time, a permanent part-time employee for us. Um, their, um, responsibilities are gonna be tied into special events. They're gonna work, um, twenty-nine hours a week. That's what we can allow them to work without having to offer, uh, health benefits. All of that is gonna stay intact. The initial plan was to give that person an extra ten hours, make them full-time, but it was a substantial cost. It was sixty thousand dollars and we were gonna get an extra ten hours a week worth of work. So, um, that, as we talked about it this last, um, few months, um, doesn't seem to make sense. And, and I agree, um, as, as I've thought through this and trying to figure out a better way to do this, there is a better way for us to do this. So, what I'm proposing now is, uh, we already have a person that does the, the bulk of our PR work. That's Lisa Flinders. Uh, she is a contract employee. Generally speaking, about sixty hours a month is what she does for us. Um, but what I would like to do is take what she does and enhance what she does, which would mean we would need to, um, probably add an extra, um, twenty hours a month. So from sixty hours a month to eighty hours a month. And so this is just in general, like this isn't, um, it's not necessarily sixty hours on the nose every month. There's sometimes it's less and sometimes it's more, but in a general sense, this is kind of where we're at. So, uh, what that would, uh, what the request would be is that we would increase that contract at a, in, in essence, a thousand dollars a month. So that would be an extra twelve thousand, but now we don't have the sixty thousand, um, full-time person. Um, so that in essence, we're gonna, it's gonna save us forty-eight thousand dollars in our budget. Um, what I provided was a list of what, uh, what we call the PR manager, and I'd actually like to change this a little bit and make it more of a communications director or something.
Well, PIO, PIO director.
Yeah, something that's, because what's, what I would like to do is to take this position and still have them oversee everything PR, um, specifically with our, the individual that I had in mind that's working for the rec, uh, she still wants to do some stuff based on if she has time to do it. But if she does have time, then she wants to do that. And what I would like is for that person to report to Lisa so that Lisa could coordinate all things going out on social media.
Good.
More specific to, what's that?
Good work, Scott.
Uh, well, so this is, this is more specific to the PG city administration, okay? Now this, we're, we haven't got to the level where the library's gonna run everything through that or the rec center on their, um, things that they put out on social media. We're not quite there. This is kind of step one of that. Um, I, I have talked to all the individuals involved. They are good with what, uh, I'm proposing to you. So should save us close to fifty thousand dollars, but in some ways, there's an added value. So on this page that I sent you, shows you all the duties. Uh, I think that's one of the questions is, well, what, you know, who's doing our PR and what are they doing? We, we've known who, but what are they doing? This is now in list form for you to understand, but there's some increased roles that are gonna be important to enhancing what we're doing. So this is what we're getting for the extra twelve thousand dollars a year. Probably the most important thing is we have an executive staff meeting every two weeks. We do it, uh, two o'clock on Tuesdays before council meeting. Um, this person will be in our meetings. And that has, this has probably been one of the shortcomings for public relations in the city is that when we have all the department directors together and we're working through everything going on in the city, to have the PR person sitting in there saying, we could do a story on that, we can promote that. This is something that the public should know. This is something that, um, uh, that would just enhance the experience of, of what we're trying to provide. Um, also promote the city. I mean, there's things that we do that are awesome that if we don't tell people, they're not gonna know. So having this individual sitting in this meeting, which we've, we've already started. I mean, uh, she's attended our last couple of meetings, um, is something that, uh, would help, I think, create a value add, uh, for what we're doing. So, um, this would also, again, working with, um, this other individual that, uh, will be doing what I call the content creation, um, the promotional things. Um, this stuff's already been done. You've probably have already seen it on our Instagram and our Facebook, uh, page. And there is just, um, it's a little different flair than what we've done in the past. Um, and so, uh, this person, Lisa Flinders, at this moment, who is our contract person, would be the one that would be overseeing this. Now, the assistant two position, uh, which was Kyler Brower, what, their job was overseeing the website, okay? Which is still a conjunction with the PR. Um, and then we would have a monthly meeting, um, me, Lisa, Kyler, where we talk about things that we needed to focus on PR-wise. The assistant two, our new assistant two, will be involved in that as well. But, um, their main thing was not necessarily PR. We had, I had Kyler working on a hundred different things. Um, and so I want the focus for PR to just run through all things Lisa Flinders with what we have going on.
Have you hired, have you hired this assistant too?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, we have an individual that we have hired. She'll start on May fifth. We'll introduce you, uh, May sixth, uh, in our meeting on May, May sixth.
This is Kyler replacement?
Kyler replacement. Her name's Ciara, Ciara Pearson.
University of, University of Utah, Wolverine, what?
Oh, she's a BYU MPA.
I knew it.
Not Boise State. Uh, Ciara comes, uh, she's worked for Lehigh right now. She is an analyst in their city manager's department. Um, she was our number one targeted candidate once we looked through the resumes and her interview backed up her resume. A lot of what she does for Lehigh is what we would have her do here in Pleasant Grove. It was almost like we carved out a person and said, that's what we want. Um, and she's gonna be a great fit. Personality-wise, I mean, just the moments that we have been around her, like, um, she's gonna be awesome.
Does she like hockey?
I, that I don't know, but she does play low golf.
Oh, okay.
She might even be better than Kyler Brower. I don't know if Kyler's listening to our meetings, but.
He's probably.
I'm sure, I'm sure she's better than Kyler Brower. Sorry Kyler, we love you, but.
We may need to change some of the interview questions, Scott, if you don't know if she's into hockey or not. Well, yeah, maybe, maybe. Yeah, we didn't get to that, uh, portion of the interview, so. So are there questions on how we, what I'm proposing now to handle our, our PR? I, I really think this is a better step than what we were proposing.
Well, now, so what did it, what did it reduce the?
So we go from sixty thousand expense down to, to, uh.
Much, much better.
Forty-eight. And if you look at our, um, our one page, what did I do with my one page? Um, so unallocated now, we have forty-eight thousand dollars. So this was built into the base budget. Um, the forty-eight thousand could either just be nothing. We could just say, you know what, we're gonna, so what, what will happen with that is that will eventually roll into capital next year. If we feel like there's another position we need at the city, um, I mean, I'm going back and forth on kind of what we want to do. If we did another, uh, position, so for instance, if we, uh, we had a couple of requests, one from the rec and one from police to take a part-timer and make them full-time, uh, with our front desk help with the rec, our police was asking for a records, uh, person that we would move from part-time to full-time, which means we don't need the full amount because we already have some of that built in. It's the same question, we're getting additional hours and now adding benefits, but it is a tool to keep people and to attract, um, you know, good candidates for these types of positions. Um, I know we had a proposal for a full-time police officer and quite honestly, my only concern there is we're having trouble keeping staffed with the positions we have open. So we could fund another position there, but I don't know what that looks like as far as actually getting a body in that position. So, those are some thoughts. I don't know if you have any feedback on the, what we have with this additional money? Well, one of the things we had discussed early on in the budget was, uh, an additional part-time enforcement officer specifically related to parking and other enforcement activities. Yeah.
And whether we maybe need more hours there or a part-time position there.
Yeah, uh, me, I just, I, I don't know if I'm quite there, at least this is in my head. That there is enough parking enforcement to justify the position? Like, are we gonna write enough tickets that it makes sense that we have this position? And this isn't a, um, hey, they have a certain quota to meet, I just, if we're gonna have somebody specific to parking enforcement. I would hope that, um, what we're doing with that position is something that can kind of pay for itself in a sense. So, that is something, if you want us to revisit, we can revisit that. Um, I, I know initially for us, uh, Lisa's staff, that was, uh, when it comes to, um, two twenty South. And kind of over by, um, you know, those townhomes where we, we've just painted all that curb red.
Mm-hmm.
The police department's been able to handle that so far, there's still, was that, go ahead?
Well, and I think we asked this in the last meeting, does Gail have the ability or the authority to help the police?
She does, in some ways.
When she's on the bound, some, she has a spare minute, right, is she, does she have that ability to, to write, write, uh, certain tickets?
She has an ability, go ahead, Tina.
Well, she does because she has the ability to write code enforcement tickets for zoning, so she's been sworn in and she can write a parking ticket.
Has she been given that authority, though? Have we told her she can do that?
We haven't talked to her about parking specifically, but she knows she has the authority to write tickets.
Are we writing, are we, are we writing? Are we writing tickets to, uh, um, the parking, the non-parking lot across from Doterra?
So, that is still in progress, so, uh, specifically to that issue. Um, we notified the property owners that they needed to not allow people to park there. They put up a, I don't know, a barrier that, uh, was supposed to, to keep people out of there, which was not effective.
No.
They put up signs that, um, the neighbors tore down, which was not effective.
So, who do we have enforcing that?
That's, that's Gail, that's code, so I just talked with Daniel about this yesterday as I'm driving down P G Boulevard and there's forty cars parked in that area. To say, you know, we need to reengage and.
I'm happy to buy a tow truck.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
So, Gail knows that she can enforce that?
Yes.
Write tickets?
We've already, we've already have sent them notice, they sort of solved the problem, I would say, for a few days, the problem is back. So, now we're at a point where you've got two weeks, or else we're gonna start fining you for people there, I think there are.
This is, this is my concern, if, if we can't enforce it for two weeks, how are we gonna enforce it for four years?
Well, but we're.
We, we got, we need a long-term, uh, we, we can, we can tell the landowner, it's, that's not gonna, that's, that's not gonna do anything, in my opinion. In my opinion, we gotta tow cars.
It's not our property.
Yeah, that's why we can't do it.
And so, there, there's a difference here that we're talking about, there's a difference.
It's a code, it's a code problem, though, they're violating code.
Yeah, so we can fine them, but we can't go on their property and tow cars.
The car or the landowner?
The landowner.
How do we get that started tonight?
So, it's started.
Okay.
They've got the letter, they've got two weeks, and then we're gonna start finding them.
Okay, and what, and what's the fine?
Yeah, or, Daniel, do you remember what the fine is?
Hundred bucks a day.
Per, per car, per?
That's the civil, that's the civil fine.
What, what's that, Tina?
That's the civil fine is a hundred dollars a day.
Per car, per?
Per, per ticket. So, you're not citing the, the car owner, right? You're citing the property owner for violating the stormwater regulations and for parking on an unapproved surface. Allowing parking on an unapproved surface.
Okay.
So, it's a hundred dollars a day while they're violating it, you're not citing the individual vehicle owner.
So.
I think this could be resolved as well with encouraging the, the property owner to engage a private tow company, similar.
And that's what they're telling us they're gonna do now, we wanted them to do that originally, and they didn't.
But since they didn't, what do we do now to make sure it happens?
So, we have a letter saying we're gonna start fining you if you do not do this.
And that's been sent or not yet?
Yeah, I believe so.
We send that?
Yep, last week, I believe.
Is each car a separate violation?
That I don't know, you know?
That I'm not sure about, I don't know if we can charge for each car, I'll have to look at the specific language of the stormwater code.
Okay, and so have we, have we told Gail not specific to this parking lot, but that she can write tickets for parking, 'cause?
Well, so generally speaking, we don't have many parking violations in our community.
But the ones that we do have, has she been told that she has the authority to write this?
No, usually the police have handled it.
But if she could do it, that would offload something the police can do, so if she's been, if she's authorized to do it.
Sorry, to answer your question, no, I don't think we've told.
Can we have that conversation with her, because that would take a load off the police of writing tickets, and that's something she could do when she's out and about.
Yes.
I think we just have to get back in the retreat that we were gonna tell her that she has that authority.
Dan, what's, what's her load right now, Daniel?
So, usually it's tagging vehicles, which, I mean, so, what Gail does is if we have vehicles that have been parked somewhere for longer than three days. Or whatever, she'll tag a vehicle, and so that's, I don't know if that's exactly what you're talking about. Parking on a red curb, we don't, we haven't necessarily told Gail, you can, 'cause that's usually been more unfortunate.
And can do it, let's give her the authority to do it, to solve some of these issues that may, she already may be out in the community and just needs to put a ticket on the car.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to explain is, I don't think we have a ton of parking issues as far as people parking on red curb and things like that.
I'm not even necessarily talking red curb, I'm just saying, let's just make sure she knows that she has the authority to do that, so we can offload that from the police. And if she's out and about, she can write a ticket.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't, whether it's red curb or the wrong spot or whatever it is, let's give her that permission to do that. It doesn't sound like anyone's had the conversation with her, so she's not able, so it might alleviate some of the concern that Steve has regarding parking enforcement, if she's able to do that.
Sure.
I gue- I guess what I'm hearing, Scott, is we had a request for an additional officer, then we hear that some of the officers are, are writing parking tickets. And so if we can have somebody who has the authority to write these infraction tickets.
Yeah.
Then maybe that.
When I say writing parking tickets, I'm talking just a handful, like, five or ten.
Well, I, I don't know how many, I mean.
I, I, I guess that's what I'm saying, we don't write very many parking tickets.
Oh, okay, so you're saying the police, it's not a huge burden on the police right now?
No, it, it, the area we're talking about specifically, we have individuals that are parking on impervious surface. Um, pervious surface, I don't know, they're parking in areas they're not allowed to.
Not even.
So, that is us dealing with the property owner saying, you've gotta get these cars off of here. We have red-curved that whole thing, because our issue was, once we tell those people they can't par- once they tell those people they can't park there. These people were gonna move onto our city street and they were gonna park on our curb. So, we have red, red-curved that whole area around those townhomes. Since we have done that, we have, I don't know, chief, has it just been warnings? Have we, have we written actual tickets? Um, for the, for the area around McKay Christiansen, two twenty South?
Once you, once you painted the curb red, there hasn't been any people parking on the red curb, they moved back to the dirt.
Yeah.
So, could I just add one little thing to answer your question about workload? We had not written a parking ticket in probably ten years, at least. The court didn't even have the correct codes or the correct language for the charging documents for a parking ticket. After we had this conversation about parking on two twenty South and the higher-density homes. We revamped the language and the codes for the court to be able to, to handle parking tickets. It is not a large-scale workload thing, I don't believe the police officers are, are overburdened by having to deal with parking issues. The request for another officer, it has more to do with their other duties than having to worry about handling parking.
That was way better said than what I was trying to say.
Well, I, I understand that, and it makes sense now to know that we just haven't been enforcing parking issues for a long time. I'm not sure that the parking issues are confined to that one area, I think that there are a lot of areas where we don't have curb and gutter. Where people are actually parked in the public right-of-way, that prevents kids from being able to walk safely on the side of the road to school. And so, I think to Sid's point where Gail's out and there's a car that's been parked in this public right-of-way and hasn't been moved, or maybe even has.
That, that we've told her she can do.
She does that, she does.
That we told her she can do.
Well, so as long as she knows that kind of stuff, but I'm, I guess I'm saying that, I mean, I'm not like wanting to be the parking guy, like, hey, let's go every street and tag every car. But at the same time, I think there are some safety issues that might need to be addressed. And then enforcement, I mean, as we get these high-density developments that come online, down by the freeway and in the Grove Zone. I, it's just gonna become a bigger problem, so I'm glad that we're getting it solved on the administrative side, so we know how to deal with it. But at the same time, like, w- we're now a community that has some of these issues that are going to just compound. As we've approved in the past, some of these developments that have lower parking, um, requirements.
Yeah.
So, we just have to be ready to deal with it and, and recognize it's an issue.
Yeah, and that, and that's a fair comment.
Two twenty, between the railroad tracks and State Street, please, please, please.
Yeah, what, what codes, I, I drove by that today and saw, thought the same thing, Diana. What, what codes are we seeing as violations, and what is our remedy to fix that area?
As far as parking?
As far as?
No, this is business, um, right in front of the businesses, there's probably, I don't know, fifty cars just in that space. Between those, from the railroad tracks to State Street, two hundred South.
Oh, two hundred South.
Two hundred South, copy tech down.
Now, as you keep going on two twenty, you get the overflow of the strawberry.
Yeah, uh-huh.
And the.
Yeah, we have, we have, uh, red curb painted there in certain areas, but other areas, they're allowed to park on the side of the street.
Okay, 'cause it feels like sometimes they're parked in a bike lane?
Well, is there, is there curb there?
I don't think there's a marked bike lane, to my understanding.
Okay.
But.
I, uh, we gotta keep in mind, people are allowed to park on the side of the street.
Okay.
Unless we have marked it that they can't.
Okay.
This is, this is a, this is a code, this has gotta be a code issue of.
You're talking the, the businesses on two hundred?
Yes.
Yes.
Um.
So, we, we will try, I do, I can tell that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, to, to this point, that is a street that is being used a lot as a gateway to our city.
Yes.
So, um, it, it doesn't look professional.
Yes.
Well, okay, let's, we're, we're out of time, counsel, but, but maybe we need to have a work session just on public, on parking.
Well, I mean, we'll continue the discussion in the council meeting, 'cause we, I got more stuff I need to go over with you.
I.
And, uh, and so let's, let's take a few minutes in our council meeting and, and review. I, I mean, I understand we got sidetracked a little bit on parking enforcement, but there are some other things we need to chat about, so. We'll, 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 we'll cover that in the council meeting.
Okay. Okay, we, we wanna turn time to the chief to finish his item on.
Okay, he wasn't able to make it, so we're okay.
Okay, all right, with that, we are past our time, and, uh, so I ask for a motion to adjourn from our work session.
So, moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from down here on, council member Rogers, you know, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.